Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held December eleventh, two thousand twelve. And item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the amount of one million, three hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars, sixty seven cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Did everybody get their claims questions answered? Or any changes or notes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive a report from Center for Economic Development Law summarizing the possible cost and procedures for the redevelopment of Cleveland Heights addition.
Mayor, just to introduce this a little bit, I'm sure most everybody or all of you at least are familiar with Cleveland Heights. This is a development out at Eastern, between Sunny Lane and Northeast Twelfth. That was at least partially developed and platted probably fifty years ago or so out there. A few homes were built over time, over time, but by and large, it's undeveloped, I would say, pretty well in a blighted condition. We've kind of talked about for some number of years really what to do with this out there. How can we make something happen or what can we do to see about getting this into a productive piece of property or productive development of some sort rather than blind than it is? So what we did with your approval is to hire the Center for Economic Development Law, which is a law firm in Oklahoma City. Emily Pomeroy is here with the firm tonight, but that law firm is the firm that probably handled most, if not all, of the urban renewal efforts by the city of Oklahoma City over the years. So they're very familiar with urban renewal and that process and what it may take to institute something like this on this piece of property. So there was a summary of their findings that was in your agenda packet, but Emily's here to kind of present that to you, ask any questions that you may have. Plus, there's also, I think, some several interested parties in the room, some property owners in the room that are out there, as well as Susie Pierce, our superintendent of schools, that wants to make a comment at the appropriate time. So Emily, if you don't mind coming up, please.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you to the mayor and council members for having me and to City Manager Eadie and Elizabeth Jones, Community Development Director, for inviting me here tonight. I'm Emily Pomeroy with the Center for Economic Development Law. We represent cities, towns, counties, public trusts, and urban renewal authorities across the state, including the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority and its redevelopment efforts. Based on meetings with Steve and Elizabeth, we were asked to look into the possibility of redeveloping Cleveland Heights using the powers of the urban renewal law. And we were asked to provide an estimate of costs associated with that, including the initiation of an urban renewal authority, the creation and adoption of an urban renewal plan, and the acquisition of the approximately three hundred fifty parcels in the one hundred and sixty acre area of Cleveland Heights. The report we provided to Steve and Elizabeth discusses that option, but before I talk some about that, I'd like to mention a range of options that the council might consider in moving forward with the redevelopment of Cleveland Heights. Number one, do nothing. Let the market dictate what happens in that area. Because the plating of the area is problematic and public infrastructure is needed to make it developable, this approach might not be the best option. But, for example, a single developer might be able to purchase all the lots and develop the entire area under a putt. Number two, implement zoning and planning changes under the city's existing powers. So, for example, create a zoning overlay district with specific requirements for development, both along the commercial fronts of Twelfth and Sunny Lane and within the residential interior. Number three, work with your existing property owners. Like the city manager mentioned, there are a couple of owners that have a significant number of lots already in the area. The city might work with them so that they can own contiguous parcels, put them into a larger tract and develop that larger tract. So develop all of community heights in phases. Another option, the city owns approximately eighty-two acres, excuse me, eighty-two lots in the area. So there might be an opportunity to swap lots that the city has with lots that property owner has that would allow for contiguous lots to be put together and develop those pieces. Number four, initiate an urban renewal authority and adopt an urban renewal plan and acquire the land in phases. So it might make sense to acquire the commercial areas along Twelfth and Sunny Lane, clean up some of the lot layout issues that are there, some of the right-of-way issues that are there, and enter into redevelopment agreements with redevelopers for the development of the commercial area. Number five, initiate an urban renewal authority, adopt an urban renewal plan, acquire all the land, and master plan the entire area. That's kind of the whole shebang, and that's the scenario we were asked to provide the cost estimates for. I understand that you have copies of that report. I might just emphasize that acquisition costs are very difficult to guess and jury awards are nearly impossible, so those are estimates. So, of course, prior to any condemnation, if the city does choose to adopt an urban renewal plan, it must be properly adopted, which includes the finding of blight. So such a declaration would be based upon factual findings that this area meets the definition of blighted area under the urban renewal law. So if that declaration is made and an urban renewal plan is properly adopted, then the city, through the urban renewal authority, could go forward with acquisition of the area. And after acquisition, one or more redevelopment agreements could be entered into with one or more redevelopers for the development of the site. So that's kind of the gamut of do nothing versus the whole shebang. And there are some options in there that I think, you know, one or more of the city could choose to take from and use its ability to clean up that area, redevelop that area, whether it chooses to do that through an urban renewal authority or just through its own zoning powers. I'd be happy to try to address any questions or if we want to leave it to some other people to speak and I can come up afterwards, whatever, you guys.
Which of these plans would best address the properties that we can't reach the owners? Because are there some properties, Steve, that we still haven't reached?
Well, we've not been aggressively trying to acquire or contacting the property owners. I know some of the other folks here in the room have been trying to acquire property out there for some years and have been unsuccessful in acquiring some of the lots. Some people think they own lots that are real valuable and other pieces of property. I don't think the owners can even be found, so.
So do you have an idea of what, say there are a lot of properties, a lot of parcels that we can't reach the owners, is one of your plans better, do you think?
Well, the power of condemnation would be an important thing to have in that instance because that would allow you to, you know, under the powers that exist in the urban renewal law, provide notice that would then allow the urban renewal authority on behalf of the city to go acquire that property. So you'd still have to go through the condemnation procedure, but it would just be through notice of these property owners, some of which might appear and some which might not.
Okay, thank you.
So you definitely need an urban renewal authority in that instance.
What is the average size of those lots out there?
I think they're about fifty feet by like a hundred and forty or something like that. They're small.
And currently, there is not any infrastructure out there? There's no water or sewer lines?
The city, there's several issues out there that we do have water out there. We own a water well that's in there, so there's water that's in there. It's certainly not available to all the lots by any means now, now at the moment. And then we brought sewer to those industrial developments over there along Sunny Lane from Fourth Street North within the last, what, six months or a year, Stan? And that brought sewer to the corner, essentially the southeast corner of the development. So there's sewer to be extended now to Cleveland Heights that there wasn't, let's say, a year ago. So the site as a one hundred and sixty acre parcel of land is not too dissimilar to any piece of property that a developer might acquire and extend water and sewer to it that's relatively close. So, yes, we have water and sewer there, but it would have to be extended to each lot as any development would.
We have a couple of citizens signed up, Marvin Hayworth. Thank you for your report, by the way.
Marvin Hayworth, I live at twenty-eight hundred Shady Creek Lane. I am a builder and developer here in the Moore area for many years. I have some literature I would like to pass out to the council if that would be, Mr. McMinister.
I have a partner in business, Bill Waterman. Many of you know him. He has served on this council several years ago, and we have been working, trying to redevelop this area for the past six years, and it is a, it's a difficult task to do. We currently own approximately two hundred and twenty lots, which is basically one-third of the lots that are there, which leaves a long ways to go. But we would like to be considered as a partner with the city since we are the largest property owner in the area to be, to work with the city to redevelop this. I believe I have a track record in the city of Moore as being a quality developer and builder, and I think you could depend on me to do a good job. And I, I'm a citizen of Moore, and I would like to do it and not have outsiders coming in, taking over this project. I would like to see a work-study session on this particular subject, and I know that's somewhere in the future, but I would like to be included in the discussions and everything that goes on with the Cleveland Heights addition. As you can see from our literature, it's quite a mess and has been for quite some time. And we've done a lot of work, a lot of studying on it. There's, the water system out there is not very good. There's, there's basically, in our opinion, no fire protection for the residents that are there. There, the residents are there on septic tanks, which the covenants and restrictions expressly prohibit. There's just numerous code violations and problems in the addition. And so if anyone has any questions to me, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I was just going to say, this is the same area that you may recall, we were involved with litigation a few years ago with Metropolitan Utilities Company. So that's an issue that's still out there, that's not completely resolved. Obviously, the issue with acquisition of lots is something that's certainly not resolved. But it's an area that can be and really should be redeveloped. Now, what Emily didn't get to is the cost. Now, again, these are estimates of cost, and we're talking about a range of somewhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars an acre to acquire this land. That, that did include, I believe, the land that you all have to get everything, so that may not be that much cost total. If we're talking twenty, twenty-five thousand an acre even for, say, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty acres, whatever it is that is out there besides what they own, is still a pretty good chunk of money. And frankly, at this point, the city doesn't have the money to just go out there and begin this process. But there are some possible financing mechanisms out there. Tax increment financing is one of those that we would look into for a possible redevelopment of this piece of property, so.
Mr. Hayworth, I know it's probably in your literature, but do you have properties that are kind of scattered about? Were they kind of all in the same area?
There's a colored map there, Robert, on the front of your deal. There, Palamo and Monet, Monet are the two entities that they own property in.
Okay, that's you guys, okay.
And then the, and the pink ones or whatever there are us, the ones we own. So you can see it's a scattered mess.
Have you, how's your luck been trying to contact owners to buy these other lots?
We have been sending out letters for roughly six years, and if they're interested in selling, we normally hear back from them. If they're not interested, you don't hear back from them, and they're scattered all over the United States. I think there's some things that could be discussed in a work-study session that might help motivate some of these people to sell. We're still sending out letters with information, trying to persuade people to sell, but some of them think the lots are worth a lot more than they really are. And so those people are hard to persuade to sell for what the true value is because in other lots, you can't build anything out there. There's no sewer. There's basically no water system, so it's, it's very difficult to build there. And the other thing that's going on out there, there's, there's a few people that own lots that are selling them to unsuspecting people for a lot of money, and then they find out that there's nothing there. This, this would help put a stop to that if this were redeveloped.
What, what kind of plans do you perceive for this area as a development?
Well, I, I see some commercial along the two arterial streets, which would be Sunny Lane, and it, and it was zoned commercial originally, and also on Twelfth Street, and then mixed use on the residential and probably a church or school site in one corner of the addition. It's going to require a lift station to serve the whole area out there because even with the sewer line that Steve Eadie spoke of earlier, it will not all flow to that sewer line. So it'll, it'll require a lift station. So there's some expense involved, and as a developer, we know how to do that, that work and how to finance and get it paid for and move this project forward in phases. It's not going to be a one-shot deal. It's going to take numerous years, as you can see by the presentation that you've received from the, the law firm. They estimate a ten-year project. I've already got six years in this project, and I'm not near there yet, so it is a long, drawn-out thing. It's not going to be easy or fast, but, but I believe it can be done. Anyone else?
I would be curious, and I don't know, I've been on the council for almost a year, you know, Ms. Hayworth was on our council, Mr. Waterman was on our council. Has anything ever come forward with the council regarding Cleveland Heights that might be, be a conflict of interest as to, to some of the things that, that may happen here? Is there any possibility that some of this development, or people could have seen this coming down the road and gone in and purchased property anticipating what may be happening today as far as developing that?
I don't think so. I don't, I have no interest in it, so.
I, I think I can answer that question because my wife and Bill were both on the council, and the only talk there was when they were on the council was that something needed to be done. There was never a vote on anything. There was never any action taken. There wasn't even a proposal put before the council. It was just talk of something needed to be done, and so Mr. Waterman and I looked at this and saw that basically nothing was going to happen unless somebody went to work on it. We went to work on it, truly believing we could get it done. We can't, not without the city's help, we can't do it. It's just not possible.
And, and I would agree with what Marvin said, there was some general discussion, but never any indication even then that we would move forward with anything.
I, I remember one discussion we had, and just the fact that it was a problem. And that, and following that, I went to an OML meeting, which was downtown Oklahoma City, and I believe somebody from the law firm that we have engaged, spoke to that session and so forth, and I had some conversation with the gentleman afterwards and talking about the situation out there. And at that time, I don't think that you had indicated that strongly, Keener, so what he had indicated was probably the only way we were going to do that, which is create an urban renewal authority because some of those owners we'd never locate or never be able to deal with. And so I don't, I, I don't see.
One of the issues that we've run into is you'll find that these lots were sold in, in the early sixties for the most part, and some of the people have passed away and they've passed on to their children, and their children haven't inherited them, and you may be trying to buy one-sixth or one-eighth of a lot at a time, and you, you've got to get all these people together to agree on the price. And we've bought some of them that way, but it's, it's a, it's a daunting task, and no matter what the city does, we intend to keep moving forward and trying to do this, but we think it can be done if, if the city gets involved, and we would like to work with the city because it's, it's something that we all know needs to be done. It's needed, something's needed to be done with it for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike Gallagher?
Hi, my name's Mike Gallagher. I'm a thirty, well, I don't know how many decades, we just can't say, thirty-plus-year resident of Cleveland Heights. I bought out there because I love the sunsets, and if you don't have a neighbor for about a hundred and sixty acres next to you, you get plenty of sun. So I'm here today to try to talk with you. I'm also representing the, I'm the vice president of the Cleveland Heights Homeowners Association. And homeowners association was, was formed to take care of the water problems that we do have out there. Those of us, there's eight of us out there that own improved properties, eight, eight families. Many of us that have been out there and owned for decades and several, we have one lady, Ms. Cleveland, I'm not sure if she came tonight, she's eighty, almost eighty, and she said that, I should speak up for us all, but we've got water problems out there, and that's one of the things that if we're going to continue to live out there, we're going to need the city's help on, and I appreciate the, the council's involvement in, in some of those issues. I know the complexity of the legalities of the water is not something easy and certainly not something easy for the attorneys to assess at this point, but one of the things that I would like to stress amongst you as our leaders is it takes a long time to move a big ship, and in the city of Moore, there are not, and please, anyone disagree with me, there are not too many big parcels of land that have this large of a cloud over their potential for development. If anybody wants to disagree with me?
I'd say it's the only one.
So of that, there are only eight of us that own improved properties. I happen to be one of those eight, so I own twenty-five percent of the improved lots out there. We are challenged by the water distribution system. I am currently in a position where I'm going to be spending either a lot more money on my property trying to enhance the investment value because that's what it's been for me. I mean, I've lived out there, but it's an investment. There's, I own the stuff right on Twelfth Street. It's those little duplexes there, they look like they've been beat up pretty good, but, you know, new siding and new paint this spring is going to go a long way, and I've already redid the interiors of the properties, so. But really, we're here to say, us as improved, as improved owners, all of us would be more interested in seeing the city take steps to further develop that property, that whole area into an area that we can be proud of much. I was, I was very encouraged by the results of the, the issues with regard to financing the, the park and the green area for Moore, and it really says clearly what the voters are willing to, I think, take on with those challenges. And I know there's lots of budgets in lots of ways, lots of money. And I know there's lots of budgets and lots of ways, lots of money's going to get spent and everything. But when you look at the overall dollars it takes to potentially acquire something with our city at this magnitude, with, you know, it being one of the largest parcels, and no offense to Mr. Hayworth, but from a real estate standpoint, it's a real anchor around your neck if you go in speculating the potential for development of the, the property. And it's going to take the city's financial power and legal power to, to make that happen. One of the ways in which, I think, maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, all of us, all of us that have improved properties are willing to sell tomorrow to the city. I know nobody's going to break out their checkbook and write us a check, but, you know, one of the ways we could put everybody on the same playing field is if you looked at all the owners as not having rights to the improvements that are on their properties, because nobody else has improved properties. The city's moratorium's been in place and been pretty effective there. I don't know what the answer is, but it's going to take us a lot of money, capital dollars, from just the owner, the, the owner, homeowners association, just to maintain our water system. Last year, I was putting money on my credit card just to pay contractors, go out there and fix. And with the city having at least a twelve-inch water line in the area, one of the ways in which we ought to look at solving the problem is through the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, they can get, they can also help finance things, they can finance the acquisition of properties. It doesn't all have to be adversarial through, you know, the rival eminent domain. But I'm talking about taking this big ship and turning it just a little, and maybe getting down the right path, and going down the right path. I frankly, my opinion on the values that they put on the lots are, you know, it's, that's kind of pure speculation. Unless everybody signs up, or unless everybody's given an opportunity to be a further owner and a further development, much like, you know, what Mr. Hayworth would be talking about. But the city needs, in my opinion, the grassy green areas. There's better ways we can use that land out there than residential development for the long term. There's some big dreams that the city has, I think, with regard to how our green areas are a balance to all the bedrooms that we have in this community. And they're in a better opportunity, I think, now that we've certainly taken the right steps with all the other growth that's going to be happening in our parks. So I appreciate your action instead of inaction on whatever course you decide to take. But I know, I'm speaking for all of us that own stuff out there, let's see if we can get something done.
Thank you very much. There's no one else lined up to speak on this issue, would anybody else like to speak?
Can I just address a couple of points? I appreciate the property owners in the area speaking up. I think that that's, are going to be a really important relationship for the city to have. I know you guys have been doing this a long time, and our firm is new to this, so we're coming in and getting to know all the players. Just a comment to Mr. Hayworth, I think that his efforts have educated the city well on what is going on, on out there in terms of acquisition of property. And I think it behooves the city to work closely with him to see if any joint efforts can be taken to redevelop that site. And Councilman Roberts, I know it was Dan Bachelor that spoke at, at OML, and he did talk to us about his conversation with you. And because of the title issues that are out there, if the city wants to be involved in the acquisition of the property, an urban renewal authority is the way to go. And just one other comment about financing. City manager Edie did mention tax increment financing. And if the city is going to play a financial role in the redevelopment of the property, it makes sense that they should be able to recoup some of the increases, especially in property taxes that are made on the property, especially if it's developed for residential. So you might just keep that in mind when you're discussing ways to try to make this happen financially. Thank you.
Thank you. Who did you say?
Mrs. Pierce.
Oh, would you like to come to the podium?
I didn't sign up.
No, we let the superintendent speak anytime she wants to.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity tonight to, first of all, thank you all for all of your support on our recent bond issue. And with the passing of that bond issue and the building of the three new schools, we find ourselves, more public schools finds ourselves in the position of having no more land for future building. And with the growth that we have, it will be imperative that we find some additional land. I know that you have a long way to go and a lot of things to be considered, but I would like to say on behalf of the schools that we would be very much interested in obtaining at least fifteen acres within this development at, at some time for an elementary school. More if it were available and we could work out something on a larger school. We have to watch our demographics, and we will do that every year and keep in touch with you with what's going on in the city. But we thought it was important that you know that we would be interested in helping that development, that develop, in the development of that community if we could in that way.
Okay, that's different, wasn't expecting that. I have a question for you, how do we make this work? If the schools, if the school is now interested in it, and they want to develop it, and he wants a park, how do we make it work?
Well, I think that this-
That's the big question.
Right, I think the city's going to have to make some tough decisions. But under the powers of the urban renewal law, it is possible to have a multifaceted development. A school and some homes, master plan the whole area around the school. These are all possibilities that, for the area. I think the city needs to decide its vision. I mean, if it's going to go for the whole shebang that I referred to earlier, I think it behooves the city to be bold and be thoughtful, of course, but get a development out there that you really want. And use the tools that you have to, to get it. I mean, there'll be bumps in the road, but, and there are definitely problems with the site, but it's a huge, awesome site. So I think the city could really do some great things out there if it's very thoughtful and strategic about what it wants.
Mrs. Pierce, what, a hundred and sixty acres, do you?
Oh, that's a little bit. At present time, we can only verify the need probably for an ownership.
So, sorry, has the school system not studied it for the long term, how much land they could possibly use?
It, it-
No study, no.
It's on, we do, do demographic studies every year and we watch the growth patterns. And, and right now, all we see in the future is an elementary school. That may change next year and the next, and it's just a little hard to predict, but right now, an elementary school.
So we need a work-study session.
Probably would be a good idea just to where we could sit down and talk through a little bit more of the details. There's a lot of legal issues here that we really haven't talked about too much in terms of the, the water district is a big boil out there that's got to be worked on somehow before anything can happen and any, any development can occur in there. That, that's got to be taken care of. I know that Marvin told me the other day, they have worked towards, or still working towards, perhaps being able to acquire that. Whether that'll happen, I don't know. We, you know, we would have the ability to acquire it through the urban renewal authority, I'm quite certain. But that's, again, going to be another cost that we have not-
We'd have a nice investment there.
We have a nice investment, and we got several very valuable lots out of it, is what we wound up with. Because we didn't wind up with a water lot, as you all heard. Which was unfortunate. But we definitely can set up a work-study session where we can look at things a little bit more informal setting, have some maps and aerial photography there, and show you what we're talking about out there. I think it is a great opportunity for the city to go in and help that area redevelop with some partners that we already know that we probably have, some money partners frankly, with Bill and Marvin and the school district willing to be able to purchase, willing to purchase property in there. So we're talking about already a little bit ahead of where we might have been.
Mrs. Pierce, while you're here, I'm assuming that there are some, are there regulations about what type of businesses and stuff can go in around a school? I mean, obviously, there'd be some regulations, I would assume.
There are some.
Okay.
Mainly related with alcohol.
I've got one other statement to say. Those of us that own improved property do have a legal right to that water. We purchased that through a settlement with Metropolitan Utilities. And that water stretches, or that, our distribution right stretched from the north-south. I'm at the east end of the property, but your water well's on the other end, so. I want to let you know, water is, it's a complicated thing, and I wouldn't want to have to end up in a lawsuit about it.
All right.
It's not impossible.
Thank you. So when do you guys want to have a work-study session on this?
Let us get together and kind of make sure we know what-
You got three different entities.
Needs to be presented and, and propose a date for it, perhaps at the next election.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sounds good. All right, appreciate everybody's input.
Do we need to make any motions or anything on this item?
I don't think we need to do it. Okay.
Item number four is consider approval of an agreement with Dillon and Associates PC for auditing services in the amount of forty thousand five hundred dollars.
Mayor and council, the city is required by state statute and city charter to have an audit of our books every year. We've contracted with Dillon and Associates, Furman from Midwest City, to do that for several years now. What we're presenting to you tonight is, is to renew the contract with Dillon and Associates at a total fee of forty thousand five hundred dollars. This includes the entire city audit, single audit, sinking fund estimates, everything that's required by state law.
What did he charge us last year?
His fee last year was thirty-eight thousand, that's a slight increase. One thing that is included in that is something that we've talked about doing for a period of time now, is to have an audit or some type of review of our hotel and motel tax. We have never formally done that. And we, we wanted to propose that this year, and that would be included in this total fee of forty thousand five hundred.
So you're happy with them?
Yes, they're, they're, they're a local firm, they do a great job, they're very timely. We're one of the first clients that he has that we, that starts the audit. We usually start our audit in late July, which is less than one month after fiscal year-end, so that's, that's very quick. He likes to, he kind of reserves that for us, because we're one of the first ones that are ready with our records. And so yes, I'm, I'm very pleased with his services.
How does he compare with some of the others as far as cost?
As far as cost, he, he's the lowest. We have bidded out at least three times, possibly four, in his tenure. And every time, he is by far the lowest cost. Auditing in the state of Oklahoma is a difficult, maybe an unpleasant thing, because there's very few firms that do it, that, that audit municipalities. For example, our last bid in two thousand and ten, we received two responses. And there was Bob Dillon's response, and the other one was about twenty thousand dollars higher, so.
That was from Crawford?
Very easy decision by him.
Crawford and Associates?
No, that was Furman Norman.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, North Oklahoma City that, that made a bid.
Crawford has bid in the past-
He used to do it.
But he's always higher than they bid.
Well, and Crawford and Associates no longer do audits, they're, they're out of the business. It's, it's, it's a difficult business, and so there's very few firms in Oklahoma that do it.
Well, if you're comfortable with them, I am.
Make motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is considered the final plot for Seener Ridge, Section One, located in the northeast quarter of Section Twelve, Township Ten North, Range Three West, being south of Northeast Twenty-seventh Street and west of Bryant Avenue. Applications by BAM Investment, Gene Mathen, Planning Commission, recommended approval eight-zero, this is in Ward Two.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located on the south side of Northeast Twenty-seventh Street and west of Bryant Avenue. It is currently zoned R1 for a single-family residential development. Section One includes sixty-seven lots with a density of four homes per acre. Water and sanitary sewer are available to serve this site, there is no floodplain on the property, and a fee in lieu of detention will be required. Access is proposed from a rural arterial roadway at Northeast Twenty-seventh Street. This will be provided through a divided median entryway from the addition. There will not be any access granted to individual lots along Twenty-seventh Street for rear yard access. And the plot does include a street stub to the property to the south for future development and connectivity. Staff recommends approval of this application, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No one signed up to speak on this, anyone opposed to this?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion, would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is considered rezoning application number eight-nine-five, located in the southeast quarter of Section Three, Township Ten North, Range Three West, being north of Northwest Twenty-seventh Street and east of Shields Boulevard, from C-five automotive and commercial recreation district to C-five PU automotive and commercial recreation district with a permissive use for used car sales, and approved ordinance number seven-three-four-one-three, application by Richard Montgomery. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item eight-zero, and this is also in Ward Two.
This application is located on the east side of Shields Boulevard and north of Northwest Twenty-seventh Street, is also known as Twenty-eight Sixty North Shields Boulevard. The north side of this property has been used for several years as a rock and stone retail sales business. The southern half of the property is vacant. The applicant is requesting a permissive use for automotive sales and rental light, which is just used car sales, for this property, for a new business to sell used cars on the south half of the property. This is a developed property, the site does have existing water and sewer. Access is provided by the northbound Shields Avenue. The site is currently designated the Moore Vision 2020 as heavy commercial. And because the proposed land use does fall under the heavy commercial designation, no amendment to the land use plan is required. You have probably seen that Shields Boulevard has traditionally been the location of the city's heavier automotive sales and services industries. And the Moore Vision 2020 recognizes this by the heavy commercial land use designation. This application is in keeping with that historical trend, and staff recommends approval of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, you said you were, okay, are we rezoning the whole area or just the half, south half?
We are rezoning the entire lot, that, that area has been combined into one lot.
So the north end is still going to be the rock quarry, or the rock, whatever they do?
Right, currently, it will still remain the rock sales, retail sales, wholesale sales. And that does fall under the C-five rezoning classification, the permissive use is only for-
We are rezoning the whole thing, but he's just going to use the south half?
Right, correct.
All right, anybody want to make a motion, anybody opposed to this item?
I have just a quick question. Elizabeth, is there any, has there ever been much interest in any other kind of development on there upon Shields? Shields or something like?
Any other development?
Shields, yeah, you talked, well, just other than car lots.
Oh.
I know when Gene Williams closed down, that was the, the big, and then there's a lot of used car lots. And I don't know that the city benefits a lot from selling the cars.
No, we don't.
And there's a lot happening in the south part of our city.
Right, we, Shields Boulevard kind of is a niche area where we can suggest that people with the heavier uses go to look. Right, we, Shields Boulevard kind of is a niche area where we can suggest that people with the heavier uses go to look because we don't allow the heavier uses along our I-35 frontage. But to answer your question is no. Uses tend to congregate together of the like uses. And so, this has always traditionally been a car sales and perhaps a little bit of wholesaling.
Yeah.
But they all tend to like to kind of congregate together. So this is really meeting the demand.
Okay.
I think there's a citizen or somebody here that, that likes speaker.
I just wanted to point out, we're going to be doing
Come on, come on. Are you, are you the owner?
Sean Salisbury, I live at one thousand five nail Parkway. And one thing I wanted to point out, we're not going to actually sell used cars there. We're going to be a, like a small mom and pop motorcycle shop that sells used motorcycles and a lot of retail stuff like jackets and stuff like that, so. We're not going to put a whole bunch of cars out. Most of the time, all the bikes will be in at night and that sort of stuff, so. I just wanted to make that aware.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing your business to mind.
Make a motion to approve?
Alright, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, just call for the vote, please.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is considered Moore Vision twenty-twenty Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Thirty-four, located in the southwest, or excuse me, southwest quarter of Section Twenty-eight, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of southeast Thirty-four Street and west of Seener Road from rural residential to light commercial. Application by Ron Waters, Planning Commission Approved. This item eight-zero, this is in Ward One.
Mayor and council, items number seven and eight on your agenda are companion items. This property is located just north of southeast Thirty-four Street and Seener Road intersection. It's currently Zoned C-three and A-one. The property is vacant, has no access to public sewer. The applicant is proposing to split a portion of the property to sell for an advertising agency office. To accommodate this use, the land use plan must be changed to light commercial, and the rezoning must be changed. In this particular instance, they are requesting a C-one with a planned unit development. Public water is available to serve the site from a twelve-inch main along Seener Road. Public sewer is not available at this location. There is no floodplain located on the property, and detention requirements were satisfied with the Twin Lakes development, which is abutting the property to the east. Access is provided by Seener Road, that is an ODOT highway. The applicant's proposal is for a small office development along the frontage of Seener Road. The use of the PUD is a zoning tool. It's meant to address concerns of commercial incompatibility to surrounding residential uses. By utilizing the PUD, the city can relax certain development requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. The residents of Twin Lakes Edition did request the developer to utilize the PUD in order to give them certain assurances as to what would actually be on the site. The PUD proposal includes the following amenities. The site will be limited to three buildings and two parking lots. The buildings will be limited to thirty-five hundred square feet each. Building design will be residential-like in character with a minimum of seventy-five percent brick-ing or masonry requirement and architectural details of traditional residential homes. And you can turn to page eighty and eighty-one to kind of see a, a site plan and some proposed elevations. A fifty-foot landscape easement is proposed for the east property line, which will eliminate buildings and concrete except for the drainage purposes within fifty feet of the eastern property line. And it should be noted that the eastern twenty-five feet of the landscape easement is virtually unbuildable because there is a large drop-off between the two properties. And all signs shall be limited to a maximum height of fifteen feet and no more than one hundred square foot per side, which is quite a bit less than what our sign code requires, or the, the minimum, or I'm sorry, maximum set out in our sign code. The signs shall be limited in number to a maximum of one per lot. And finally, the driveway should be limited to shared drives only, with two being allowed. The city will allow all the buildings to utilize private septic systems only if developed as described in this PUD. By limiting the size of the buildings to thirty-five hundred square feet and the use of the buildings to administrative and professional office only, the sewer flow will be compatible with common private septic systems. And it should be noted that open sewage lagoons shall not be allowed. This property is currently designated the Moore Vision twenty-twenty as rural residential because the C-one uses are considered to be light commercial, and amendment to the Moore Vision twenty-twenty is required. And some of the residents from Twin Lakes Edition have expressed some concern regarding the appropriateness of the commercial properties in relation to their residential properties. And so, the application does include the landscape buffer that will work to mitigate any adverse effects of the higher intensity development of the commercial. And also, the PUD does offer the architectural requirements and guidelines to help maintain the rural residential character of the area. We did have two meetings at the Planning Commission regarding this item, and I, the minutes were sent to you this afternoon. It was the only item that generated any discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. Concerns that were cited include increased traffic along Seener Road. And this application, we feel, does address that one concern that was brought up by the property owners a little sooner in that it does limit the, the size and the use of the building. We do think that with that, those limitations, that there will be just negligible increases in the traffic that will be generated. And we are limiting the driveway access to Seener Road, which should also help with the traffic flow in that area. But I do note that Seener Road is a state highway. The traffic flows are heavy and the speeds are high, so that's just kind of a disclaimer. So staff does recommend approval of this application. We do feel like the applicant has met the intent of the PUD requirements and have worked with the city and the concerned property owners as much as possible. I would add that number four of the contingencies, the addition of a minimum roof pitch requirement for all buildings to be nine to twelve, that was a requirement that the Planning Commission specifically wanted. They felt it would be more in line with the existing residential homes in the Twin Lakes Edition. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. The applicant and the proposed business owners here as well.
Did, did ODOT approve a curb cut on that?
They have not reviewed the specific curb cuts yet. That'll be done at the building permit stage.
Okay. Because that's up to them to grant it even if we zone it.
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Anybody opposed to this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Excuse me. Consider, okay, are we on number nine? Okay, that's why I, okay. Consider ordinance number seven-four-three-thirteen, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Three, Article C, Section Twelve dash three-eight-six of the City of Moore Code.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's not called.
Okay.
Sorry.
Alright, sorry about that. Back to eight. Consider rezoning application number eight-nine-four, located in the southwest quarter of Section Twenty-eight, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of southeast Thirty-four Street and east of Seener Road from A-one Rural Agriculture District to C-one PUD Office District, Planned Unit Development, and approved ordinance number seven-three-three-one-three. Application by Ron Waters, Planning Commission Recommended Approval of this item eight-zero. This is also in Ward One. Do we have a motion on this item?
Make motion to approve?
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Just like my comment, I just think it's neat that you spent the time to work with both sides on this thing and put this thing together, and I think you've done an awesome job. And I think it's great that we have a city that is willing to do that because I don't think the cities around us would, and I'm just proud that we do that. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Terry. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number nine is consider ordinance number seven-four-three-thirteen, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Three, Article C, Section Twelve dash three-eight-six of the City of Moore Code, adopting resolutions, or excuse me, adopting regulations and standards concerning the maximum height, square footage, and aesthetic requirements for accessory buildings on residential lots under three-quarters acres.
Mayor and council, in your packet, you do have staff's proposed accessory structure ordinance. This was developed with council suggestions from the previous meeting that we had when we discussed this. And I'll just give you a very quick summary of what the ordinance actually says. There would be strict restrictions put in place for all lots under three-quarters of an acre that are residentially zoned or with a residential use. The restrictions would be, number one, a maximum square foot of all accessory buildings not to exceed six hundred square feet, and this would include both temporary and permanent accessory buildings. Number two, a maximum number of accessory buildings on any lot, and that number would be the maximum of three. And also, a maximum ten-foot wall height. And this would just be the, the sides of the walls on the sides, from the ground level up to the fascia. And that the accessory buildings should not exceed the overall height of fifteen feet, and that would be measured from the ground to the roof ridge. And a permanent accessory building built at the front or side building line, this would be on the same plane as a house, so it would not extend back from the house. It would actually be on the same level as a house. Fifty percent of the facade facing a street must be covered with brick, rock, stone, to complement the existing house. And then we added another part of the ordinance to cover steel shipping containers, which is a subject that has come up over the years, which is steel shipping containers shall not be used as permanent or temporary accessory building within any residential zoning district. And these would be the steel shipping containers that are put on railroad, or trains, excuse me, or shipped across country, very distinctive shipping containers. Open for comments, suggestions?
I would like to add something to that, that a building permit is required for all of them. And the reason is, is that way we can go through and a, actually look at the thing before it's placed on the property. I don't care about the fee, I just think it should be required that the building permit is necessary.
Or the, even the ones on skids or that sort of thing?
Yeah, every one of them. That way, we take a look at it before it's put down and permanently installed.
We, didn't we used to do that actually? We used to do that?
All the cities around us do.
I hear what you're saying, Mayor, but the only problem with that, you have to tweak that ordinance some block because you get subdivisions like Mayor's Westport, those are very small lots. And code enforcement's trying to clean up the property, and then they cannot meet the setback requirements of our zoning district with those portable buildings. Because there's ten-foot rear yard setback, five-foot side yard. Well, those are tight lots, some of the lots are not over forty-five feet anyway. And they won't, there's just a postage stamp yard, so if you
Yeah, but the guy that builds the fourteen-foot tall one in the backyard right there, that's the guy we want to catch before he builds it.
Ryan, I agree, as long as you can lax the setbacks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care about the setbacks, that's, that's not a problem with me. I'm talking about the guy that has the, the deal for his, you know, two of his RVs or whatever. That's just way out of place. Or the guy that sits, sits back and he puts like four in his yard. And it's like, okay.
I think this ordinance directs that.
Yeah.
Directs that.
Right, yeah.
Because you have the three.
And that's one thing that we as staff discussed, is that with these restrictions in place, it will be difficult for people who do have RVs to build a structure that could house it. And so, what you're really doing is in effect encouraging people just to store them on their lot somehow, like in their driveway or just in the backyard on grass. But this would be very difficult to actually construct a
Some of those are bigger than fire trucks.
Some of them are very big, yes, indeed.
Well, they have the option to go to the Board of Adjustment.
That's correct, yes.
If they wanted to build something that's larger.
But overall, any future structure like that will come before planning department and so forth before so we, we will be eyeing that, you know, and it's not possible for them to build without that permission, right?
Well, they, it's not, they should not, sometimes they do, I'll be honest, but no, they should not. They should always pull a permit before they build a, a permanent building.
And what happens if they don't?
Well, that's a great question.
Because you know this will happen.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, we need to do something within this ordinance that indicates that we're real serious about this, that we don't
How about we add the term, "it shall be demolished"?
Yeah.
It, it rarely happens, and again, it has happened, it rarely happens at a permanent building where there's electricity that's going to be installed and that sort of thing doesn't get permanent. And those are, a lot of times, those are companies that are building those, and they know they have to have permits. So that's, that happens very rarely, although it has happened, if a property owner goes out there and just starts doing it himself. We've sent some of those to the Board of Adjustment in the past, others have had to start over. And others frankly have been left. What we think this will do is make people aware that, hey, they can't have a whole bunch of storage units in the backyard. And there's some aesthetic requirements if they go along the front building line or the side building line. And they can't build them very large, I mean, that's what we thought we heard from you.
Right.
Okay.
I just, you know, I know that we have people that live within the City of Evans and Moore that will, this won't bother them.
That's true, just about any ordinance that we have out there, believe me. But to me, we can do our best to get the word out among building companies. We can certainly do that, to make them aware that if it's over a certain size, then they're going to have to come see the city before they even contract to build a building with somebody. We can do that, to get word out in the marketing department, this and that, in terms of getting the word out. But, you know, it still's not going to prevent somebody from just start building something if he so desires. Most people in a municipality or in a city know that they've got to have a building permit if they build something, most people.
Well, if they build something that violates this, do we have any rights to ask them to make you conform, you know, to our ordinance?
Yes, sir. I think probably what we would do is require them to go to the Board of Adjustment, who can grant variances. And during that process, we would talk about ways to either mitigate the, the problem, whether it is putting on additional aesthetic standards or landscaping or whatever it's going to take to camouflage, or we would just let them know that our recommendation will be that they need to make it conform, and that would be an added expense.
Put it in there that it says that if you don't comply, it has to be demolished at the owner's expense. That has some teeth in it. The Board of Adjustment just says, okay, that's fine, no big deal. Let's put it in there where it says, you can't do that.
I agree with you on that.
I agree with the concept, but there may be a, a couple of minor things that can be fixed instead of demanding somebody demolish something, what it can be fixed.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, they, they ought to be given that opportunity, but if they fail to comply, then it ought to come back.
Exactly.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
I like that, to give them a chance, and if they can't do it, then it's coming down to jurisprudence.
Get it back within codes or it's just appear.
Work with them, tell them what it needs to happen to, get it to conform, yeah.
I don't know, Randy, that, that even necessarily has to be in the ordinance. It says, I mean, it's implied in an ordinance that if you don't have a permit to build what you're building, you have to bring it into compliance with the code.
Right, you have your, if you have the requirements, height, width, location, and it's not done and it's not done according to those requirements, then you're going to end up with an action of enforcement on the rule.
Quite likely through district court.
Yes, but definitely.
Look, if you're satisfied, we've got the remedies, if they're available and so forth, then...
That's fine.
I, I don't have any problem with this one.
I would like, if we could, before we vote on this, I've actually waiting on some input from some people that are looking at it. They meet at McDonald's every morning, and they all have my phone number, so I'd really like to, I'd really like to hear from them, to hear what they have to say. So that's maybe we could possibly table any kind of action on this till our next council meeting.
When, when are they meeting at McDonald's next?
Every day, we're there every day.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll second your McDonald's table.
There's going to be a lot of wisdom coming out of it.
Yeah, this better, this better be good.
I don't know, I can't wait.
Would you call the vote? We have a motion in a second for a table motion. Would you call the vote to table it to the next meeting?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, it's tabled to the next meeting, thank you. Item number ten is consider approval of a contract with EST in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for construction plans to rebuild Telephone Road from Southwest Fourth to Northwest Fifth Street.
Mayor and council, I think we're all aware of that stretch of roadway, it's been rough for years and years. And what we're proposing is the engineering fees to redesign that drainage structure there on the northern part of that stretch of roadway by Fairmore Park, and also look at the drainage across the highway on the east side, that's carrying a large part of the stormwater in the northern part of our city. And then when we get the survey information, it'll be determined what we can build. We, we know we can definitely build the existing two-lane with sidewalks, but we want to look at maybe some possible turn lanes at Main Street, and maybe some bike lanes or three lanes of roadway. But we have to identify the right of way before we can make that decision. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
So you said bike lanes?
Possibly, we don't know.
That would be good, since there's so many kids coming out of South Gate going to the junior high there.
The sidewalks, I think, are a must. There's a lot of walk, foot traffic in that neighborhood.
I agree.
Make motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Sergeant.
Thank you, vote. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is consider approval of agreement with Utility Service Partners Private Label Incorporated, DBA Service Line Warranties of America to provide water and sewer service line warranties to residents of Moore.
Mayor, this is the item that we had, Brian Davis was here at the last meeting, presented this to you all, that, the service line warranty program, that with your approval, that they would make available to all of our utility customers in the city limits of Moore for their sewer lines and water line, service lines. I did, I emailed it out to you, but I did visit with the city manager of Lawton, and I think he was the utilities director of Stillwater, and they both were very pleased with it, said it had saved a lot of their customers quite a bit of money on it. So I, I just think it's something that's a, that'll be very valuable for some of our residents in town.
Okay, I would agree.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item twelve is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Item B, ratify action of the city council on approval of an agreement with Dillon Associates PC for auditing services in the amount of forty thousand five hundred dollars. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the amount of nine hundred forty-eight dollars, one hundred and six, or excuse me, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, ten cents.
Make motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sergeant.
Thank you, vote. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Everybody get their claims questions answered? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number thirteen is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held February nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand, two hundred twelve dollars, thirty cents.
Moving to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sergeant.
Any other discussion on these items? Any changes, notes to the minutes? We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number fourteen is new business for items not on the, on the agenda. Item A is citizens forum for items that are not on the agenda. If there's no one signed up, anyone want to speak? Item B is items from the city council or trustees. I have something, tomorrow is election day, so go out and vote.
I agree.
So, and you guys who didn't have an opponent, congratulations. We appreciate that.
I have two things. One is regarding Veterans Park. I had a complaint from the neighborhood out there about dogs doing their business, and they were looking for suggestions on ways that we could, they could enjoy the park out there without having to be careful where they run and play and walk. I told them I wasn't sure exactly what we could do about that, but is there any, you know, I mean, I hate for us to go as drastic as to say that no dogs can be allowed in a park, but they're, they're, they, they said it's pretty bad out there.
We do, it is on the ordinance books, the people have to clean up after their...
Well, I know, apparently they're not.
Is it posted top? Do we have the little bags of dispenser?
I know, but it's, it's not happening.
Stan, do we have any of those little doggie bag stations out there?
Yeah, they're, they're out there, but I, I know, but they're not being used. I mean, these are great, but they're not being used, apparently, so, so there's a large complaint. Yeah.
Terry, can you handle that?
Yeah, can you get them cleaned up? Can you clean it up for us?
Jerry? Yeah.
You have any officers on light duty? So, you know, I, I, I don't know, is, if it, I was trying to think of, you know, solutions, I didn't know if they're...
Is there any signage?
Yeah, there's, I think there's, yeah, there's signage and there's, yeah. You know, and I didn't know if there's...
We can, we can put something in the newsletter and do some more, things like that to remind people.
It's, it's an honors, you know, bill, you know, but, you know.
Yeah.
I, I, I didn't know what to, what to tell this individual, you know? Yeah.
I don't know what her signage says, but there's a place in Colorado that I frequent regularly, and their signage is very clear, is it is a city ordinance and you can be fined. If you don't, so maybe we could be a little more clear with maybe even a couple more signs.
That's a good idea.
Is that, can code enforcement write a citation without being a police officer?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would...
Please, that's a question we have for all police officers.
So maybe they have to see it happen and see that animal do it.
Yeah. They just have to be out there, not, not every day, but just go out there and fix the problem and then go back to business as normal.
So if any police officers are getting a little lippy.
We got new duty.
Oh, man.
To give a new term to light duty?
Some of them may live in your ward, and you're not going to go vote tomorrow if you encourage that.
Hey, there's a lot of citizens out there that want that dog boot cleaned up.
Sure.
And the other item was, the, they'd mentioned Bryant, and it's, it's, it's out of our city, but they were wondering, and I'd have an answer, if we had talked with Oklahoma City at all about getting Bryant fixed north of twenty-seven. That, that's what I thought, right? I wasn't sure exactly what, what the good answer was to these individuals.
Right, that, Oklahoma City does have that on their plan for street repairs. They are actually going to do a resurfacing of that, but it won't be for a couple of years still, and they're applying for federal aid funding.
Okay, they are, okay, so a couple of years probably then, okay.
Well, I mean, we contact Oklahoma City occasionally when we get complaints, just, you know, passing on complaints, and they fix the potholes and all that, but a major repair is they're going through, I think they're going through the STP funds, the state and federal funds for resurfacing.
Okay, right, that's a good answer, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any items from the city manager or trustee?
Just a couple of things I want to mention. One is just wanted to welcome, acknowledge John Salisbury. John's our manager of our JCPenney's in town, if you didn't know or remember. Welcome, John. Glad to see you. We are looking at possible dates for the council retreat of May third, fourth, or May ten, eleven, which is the first two Friday Saturdays in May for the council retreat. A Friday evening, probably a, it's informal, maybe a dinner get-together Friday evening, the third or the tenth, and then the all-day Saturday event on the fourth or the eleventh. So if you can't make one of those that you know for sure now, speak now.
Okay, what was it, for the?
No, it's May, both May, third and fourth, or tenth and eleventh. Hearing no objections.
Hold on one, hold on one, second, let me check out the scores real quick.
Either one of them.
Just check on the prom and graduation.
While you're looking at that, Robert, I also just wanted to, on behalf of me and our staff, or David Thompson, our staff member, IT guy that's here normally at the council meetings, his mother-in-law passed away yesterday, and his mother passed away today.
Oh, my God.
So they are having some rough times in his family, so we just wanted to mention that and send out our condolences and prayers.
Either date works fine with me.
Yes. Without being able to call my wife, I'm, I'm winging it, I'm winging it here, it's, so hey, we're, we're just, yes.
Hang on, now, just open up the calendar and... Uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, so which day? You're the one that brought it up, pick it up.
I did. It, well, it doesn't, um, we will have the new council members and/or the old ones, we re-sworn in on the fifteenth, so everybody will be here. So perhaps that second one, just to give them a little bit of time to get their feet on the ground, second?
Tenth and eleventh.
May ten, eleven.
Great.
Let's do that.
Sounds wonderful, thanks. All right, item fifteen is German.
So, second.
All right, thank you, vote.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.